Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Southbridge Town Council Meeting on Monday, February eighth, two thousand twenty-one, at seven P. M. Meeting is being conducted via remote participation. Upon this meeting to order. During the Governor's Bakers March twelfth, two thousand twenty orders suspend in certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law chapter thirty-eight, section eighteen. And the Governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order. Conclusions of the number of people they may gather in one place. Meeting of the town council is being conducted via remote participation only. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Reminded that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access, channel one ninety-two, or by the remote information noted below. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website at W W W dot C I dot Southbridge dot M A dot U S as soon as we are able to. Remote call vote is required for all votes taken under this order. Time. Please rise for allegiance. Allegiance to the fact, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call now.
Counselor Adams? Counselor Adams?
I think it's frozen.
Okay, I thought it was. Counselor Katrona?
Present.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor Dow?
Present.
Counselor Jovan?
Present.
Counselor Lazo?
Present.
Counselor Marquetti?
Present.
Counselor Ryan?
Present.
And Counselor Steves?
Present.
All members present? Considering accepted town council meeting minutes of Monday, February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one. Your motion? Your motion is second. Any errors, corrections, or remission? Counselor Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick clarification on item number nineteen. I just wanted to clearly state that I was opposing it, although I did state, I did talk a little bit about the moratorium issue. Specifically, I wanted to state that I am opposing it because I don't want to see what happened, what happened on Dresser Hill happened to other neighborhoods, and that I'm concerned about solar arrays destroying farmland and our forests, which I had also brought up at that point.
Okay, you have those additions then? Were you talking to Mary or what? Mary?
Yeah, by God, thank you.
Off to Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On agenda item number thirteen, I believe I voted no. That's all, thank you.
You did, yes. That is correct. Do you have that, Mary? Okay, anyone else? Any other errors, corrections, or remission? In non-remote office amended.
Counselor Katrona?
Present.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
And Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Agenda force subcommittee reports. General Government, Counselor Steve?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on February first, and items number ten and fourteen were on our agenda, so we'll deal with those then. Our next meeting is tentatively the seventeenth. The time is to be announced, it hasn't been posted yet.
Thank you. Department of Public Works, Counsel Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had no meetings and no meetings scheduled. Thank you.
Education and Human Services, Counsel Katrona?
No meetings and no meeting scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. Plan Development, Counsel Adams?
You guys can't hear me right now.
Yeah, you're all set.
Oh, all right, thank you, I appreciate it. So we had a meeting on the second of February. Items number sixteen and seventeen are on tonight's agenda. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for the sixteenth of February. That's all I have.
Thank you. Protection of persons property, Counsel Lazo?
We have, we had a protection persons property meeting. We have agenda items tonight that we have recommendations for, and we have no meeting scheduled for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Special Committee reports, coming with nineteen public health and safety briefing. We see Chief Norman in on. Do you have anything for this evening?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we all know, the vaccination center at the senior center is going well. I do know there's been some many calls to either the senior center of the Board of Health and Harrington Hospital to set up appointments for seniors out of seventy-five-plus years of age. Towards the end of the week last week, we added a call center at the Y M C A. Their local number is their way to access them. They will either assist you with getting an appointment by, you know, calling and talking to you, or they'll assist you while walking through the steps of the application and the internet and on the internet if you have a computer at home. It seems to be going really well. As of Friday, the Governor's Office, along with D P A's, announced the two-one-one call. So you can, from any phone, more so a cellphone, I should say, dial two-one-one, and they have over five hundred representatives, call takers, that can assist you with getting any appointments in any of the sites in Massachusetts. Obviously, being Southbridge, we would like our people to choose the Southbridge site, and it is working out very well. I can tell you, as of this morning, there are six hundred and twenty-one Southbridge residents that have been inoculated, and we just keep pushing forward with information and trying to get the seventy-five-plus and over applicants, excuse me, appointments, because that seems to be the hardest part, is getting them the appointments. We're working on a few other items, and thank you very much. That's, any questions?
Any questions of Chief Norman? Go ahead, Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Chief Normandin. Can you tell me more about the statistics? How are, you say inoculated, is that just first-time injection total? Or is it total people who've gotten both injections?
Mr. Chairman, to Counsel Ryan, if you don't mind?
No, go ahead.
The general question to the Harrington representatives today that do the record-keeping were how many people were inoculated from Southbridge right now. I can get the further statistics for you on the second doses, first and second doses. I would gather that it's just the first ones, because we just started doing seventy-five and overs, starting two weeks ago, so it's either a twenty-one-day span or a twenty-eight-day span. Hypothetically, I don't think any of those people have done the second doses.
No, but if I could just have, yeah, if you could send over that data about how many doses, and just in general, since vaccination has started, I would really appreciate that.
Will do.
I just follow up on the email that we got, when I believe that Harry Lemieux from the hospital said that that was first. So, yeah, we'll verify it, but he says, note, these are unique residents and are not double-counted based on first and second doses, was his email, but we'll verify that information. Chief Norman?
Would it be easier if we get that count after the second inoculation? I, I think it's going to get confusing because of the two different medications, the twenty-one and twenty-eight. I'm sure we could get it, but maybe we asked them to say, let us know, and so how many residents are completed full dosing?
We'll work on it. Yeah, we'll work on that, Counsel Ryan, to make sure, and we'll see if, we'll have a follow-up meeting next week, so we'll, we'll get that information. Go ahead, Counsel Ryan, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, just a follow-up, it made me think of it. Could you also find out, when you're asking all these questions, how many people have come for the first dose but haven't returned for the second?
Yeah, we'll find that information out.
Thank you, that's all.
Of those percentage, Southbridge had the highest percentage of area residents, so we are, if anyone had a concern about that. Counsel Adams?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to mention that Chief Woodson and I had a discussion about our next Facebook Live event. We decided on twenty-two February, at twelve-thirty P. M., and we'll have Harry Lemieux, Harrington Hospital, and possibly the doc there as well, so that'll be our next Facebook Live event. Thank you.
And there will be changes of the way the traffic goes up in that area. That information will be put out because of the increase in the number of vaccinations, so it's been true partnership with the Police and Fire Department and Harrington Hospital to make sure that we have as smooth an operation as possible. So we're trying to handle everything that we can, and of course, we had a very mild winter with no snow, and now that we're trying to ramp up vaccinations, we're getting hit with snow, so kudos to the D P W for trying to maintain that site as well, so we'll keep going. Any other questions for the Chiefs? Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions and then a comment. First off is, do you have any record of how many available doses there are between the Pfizer and the Moderna, the differences between the two vaccines? Because I know you're using both Pfizer and Moderna.
If you know offhand, I thought the other day they said they had around nine thousand doses that just came in. They have, so there's plenty of vaccinations, so it's not a vaccination issue right now, I believe. Is that correct? I believe that's what was said on Friday.
Yes, correct, so obviously with the uptake of the call centers at the state, they've released a lot more appointments. As we know, frustrations with a lot of the seniors, it's been getting the appointments. You get to a certain point, and then they close off appointments during the day, and then they release them when the next batch of vaccines come in, so. Is that simple, Harrington? I don't know the exact numbers. We can get those numbers for you next week for the next meeting, or we can email them out, that's not a problem.
Okay, I was just curious, and also the other question I had is, I've, as some of you know, I do meals and wheels down there, and I've seen a couple of ambulance go in there. I was just curious if we've any records of how many people are having negative reactions?
I can say we have had some responses to the facility for some reactions. I don't want to get into too close to hipper, I know we're not talking about patient names and things like that, but no, we've probably done a half, half a dozen or so responses to the Armory Four reactions.
Okay. That's pretty low.
The total number of vaccinations were right around sixty-three-hundred vaccinations up until as of Saturday morning, so six thousand three hundred was the number total so far, so.
Okay. That's, that's very low percentage, that's good. And the last thing I just wanted to point out is, I actually wanted to give kudos to Pat Haddock, who happens to be on the call, for all, for having seen her take so many calls and deal with them and help people get through the process, which I think we've all heard how much of a mess it is in the state level, so thanks to Pat for doing that. That's all I had to say, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Chief Woodson, you're on, do you have anything else you want to add while you're on?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. We'll have all the, like Chief Norman had said earlier, I believe you did, the traffic patterns and everything, we'll post on social media. There'll be no, no real issues, we're just going to try to do everything one way, but we can explain all that, and if need be, I can send it to all the elected officials, can do that tomorrow, just in case you're asked by any of the citizens.
Yeah, and also we'd like to thank this local business in that general area that has made use of his parking area for some of the staff, so that we can have additional parking in the area. So we are working on all the issues as to parking, transportation, with other groups as well, to try to get as much flow with little input, impact to the local residents, so. More information, we'll make sure we get that all out. Any other questions? Seeing none. Chairman's announcements first, we'll be holding a, I talked a while back about having a council meeting in the hole with the town manager to talk about a variety of the projects that we had completed, things and priorities that we want to pen, overall discussion, we're going to have that meeting next Tuesday, February sixteenth. There'll also be an executive session part of that for some other topic relative to rail property, so we'll be sending out, sending out an agenda to talk about those items that some councils have pending, and we'll work on that as well. Like to thank Chief Norman for reaching out to, to myself and Chief Woodson to let us know that Congressman Richie Neal had come to town to visit the vaccination center. Had an opportunity to meet with the Congressman and discuss a variety of issues, not only the vaccination center, because of what we set up there on behalf of the town. He had conveyed how Southbridge is a finest of the town of Southbridge, and some of the things that he had brought to Southbridge throughout the years, and I asked him that we'd like to see him a little bit more into the community, because we do have a list of projects and things pending, and some of the good things that we had going on, which he could visibly see such as wells, middle school, the streets. But I did have a conversation with him about the fire station project, so we made contact with some of his aides that were there as well. So we're hoping to have future meetings with the Congressman, so it was a pleasure, and thanks to the chief for having that come out. And with that, I think that's all I have tonight. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just cover a couple of things rather quickly. As you know, I mentioned at our last meeting during the town manager's announcements that I had received interest from Counsel Ryan with regard to the rider community position at the W R T A. The W R T A since informed me that they had filled that position, but what they did point out to me was that the town, the town manager in the town has the ability to sit on the advisory board or a designee. So I did send an email to Counsel Ryan, and we need to have a follow-up conversation, but where she has expressed interest, I think I would like to ask the council's permission, whether that has to go through a, the subcommittee process, or we've just put it on the next agenda, but I think it would be good if we could have Counsel Ryan sit on the W R T A's advisory board, where she had already expressed the interest, and we do have the ability to put someone on there, and she does participate, so we can look to have that on a future agenda. As I did share with many of the council members, we are now going to have a vacancy on the Airport Commission. I did receive the resignation from Mr. Silverberg. I did have an opportunity to speak with him, and he indicated at this time, there's some personal reasons why he has to step down, but he would look forward to coming back at a later date if the opportunity presents itself, and I've heard informally, there may be some people that are looking to apply, so as soon as I get some applications, I will put that through the appropriate subcommittee. I also sent out some emails. We've been doing rather well with our grant applications. As you know, we received a grant for the shared streets for the pedestrian-oriented safety and signage and flashing beacons in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The good and the bad is, we do get that money, the difficulty or the challenge is that some of these grants have to be used up rather quickly by the end of the fiscal year, if not sooner, in June, and staff has wasted no time last week. We are already looking at the, doing the procurement and putting together the bids for these things, working on it, so we're hoping to take advantage of these. We also received an urban agenda grant in the amount of seventy-two thousand dollars, and we're waiting on the numbers for the local rapid recovery program. In addition to Congressman Neal coming to town, he also was on the radio in the Boston media market, and that was overheard by Congresswoman Trahan's office, and this afternoon, as well as last week, I spoke with one of the representatives from her office, her staff, and this afternoon we had a call, Andy Pelletier from Inspections, and Chief Norman was on there, as well as members from Harrington Memorial Hospital, and the good news is that we're getting a lot of good press coverage for the fact that this town was prepared and had their emergency distribution site plan in place, and was able to work with Harrington Hospital, and the word has spread, and people are looking to the town of Southbridge as how to do things right, and on top of that, both Chief Norman and Andy Pelletier and me were interviewed this past week by Spectrum News, they came out to take a look at what was going on. So a lot of good things are happening in Southbridge, and people are beginning to recognize, and that was evidenced by the press coverage from last week. I did send some other emails, I did have some questions on the status of the Mill Street Bridge, and Director Blakely had indicated the contractor had finished the construction this week, and that the engineers will be soon inspecting the bridge, and then we were waiting to hear from Mass D O T when they will be here for the onsite reinspection and let us know when we can reopen the bridge. We did cover some of the information about the vaccinations already, and that is all I have really at this moment in time, Mr. Chairman. I have time to take questions, you can do it now or later on in the meeting.
Any questions for coming in? Counsel Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question for yourself, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Town Manager. In the minutes to the meeting on the twenty-fifth, the last meeting, it was mentioned that Cable Access is working on updating the chambers so we can get back to the dais. Can you just give us a quick update? It looks like you had said for next month, meaning February?
Had a little bit of a hiccup, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
The two main people that we work with over in Cable have been out, there was exposures to COVID, so we haven't made a lot of progress on what's going on internally. On the last that I know, Mr. Cosgrove had indicated we would be able to move forward, but he has been out, and he hasn't, you know, he's been under the weather, so I expect he'll be back in the next couple of days, and I can work on getting an update and emailing that out to the council.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do know that they were waiting on, part of it had been completed, and they were waiting on getting the sound technician for the interior sound to make sure that everything was balanced, so like the town manager said, due to them being out, it has been delayed, so as soon as we can get it up, we will definitely try to get it up. So, any other questions? Seeing none? Citizens Forum, is there anybody from the virtual world? Would you address the council on anything, not on the agenda? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Counsel Marquetti.
I'm sure you don't have any presentations, but you did skip it.
I'm sorry, yes, there is no presentations, thank you. So, no presentations. Citizens Forum again? Thank you. Seeing none? Item ten, vote to confirm Town Manager's appointment of Denise Clements to the Cable Advisory Committee, effective immediately through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, to fill vacancy due to resignation, ethics training, good standing. Second? I'll go with Mr. Town Manager, then the recommendation of the subcommittee. Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The members of the Cable staff did reach out to Ms. Clements and encourage her to apply, we do have two vacancies on the Cable Advisory Commission, and you will hear very quickly from the subcommittee. We did advance her application, and as you all know, Ms. Clements has a longstanding history of volunteering with the town and has significant knowledge in this area, and I think she would be a welcome addition to the Cable Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Counsel Steve? General Government?
Yeah, we did discuss this, and I think Denise talked a little bit, a lot of, a lot of stuff that Mr. McColl just mentioned, she also brought up, and she, and we voted unanimously, other than her abstention to support it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
And Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Denise, for stepping up to another committee, appreciate it. Item eleven, vote to approve a transfer from account number zero-zero-one-one-three-two dot five-seven-eight-one-zero-zero, Town Council Reserve to account number zero-zero-one-one-two-three dot five-one-nine-three-zero-zero, other personal service tuition in the amount of three thousand dollars, but tuition reimbursement is per the contract with the Town Manager. Is there a motion?
Hello?
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Ryan? Do you have a question?
No, I just seconded it.
Okay. As you know, this is part of his negotiated contract, it didn't go through a subcommittee because it is part of the contract, so there was no need, I felt there was no need to go through a subcommittee because it's a contractual obligation, and whatever the personnel policies are, that's what they are. Counsel Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I would like to see some documentation on this, I believe in the, in the contract, in the contract, the Town Manager's contract. There must be evidence of completion with a passing grade, proof of payment, and it must be a public relation court, so I would like to see some documentation. I'm sure he has it, I would just like to see it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did provide that when I, when I brought this issue up, and I'm more than happy to forward that on.
Thank you. I know it would have to go through Karen's office, Karen wouldn't put it through without the evidence, so I know she's really good about doing that. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
And Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item twelve, vote to approve a transfer from account number zero-zero-one-one-three-two dot five-seven-eight-one-zero-zero, Town Council Reserve Fund to account number zero-zero-one-two-two-zero dot five-one-three-zero-zero-zero, fire overtime in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars due to delay with FEMA reimbursement process. Is there a motion?
Hello?
Motion by Counsel Lazo, seconded by Counsel Steves. Counsel Lazo, this came through your subcommittee first?
Yes, it was unanimous, favorable to push it forward for a positive vote tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything to add, or you want to defer to the chief?
I'm happy to explain, I can defer to the chief, but this really boils down to the FEMA reimbursement process, and we've talked about this on several different calls and other meetings throughout the week. You know, we, we just want to make sure we're getting what we're entitled to, and I just say this generally, I let the chief address the specifics, but there are a lot of programs that are saying that you spend the money and you'll get the reimbursement, and this is one of the things that the chief and I have talked about. It makes us concerned when we, we have to submit for the money, because in this particular case, we submitted what we believe were valid expenses, and FEMA is questioning those. They have authorized a certain amount of reimbursement, and we're entitled to that, but they, they're, they're not giving us all that we're entitled to, and it's, we're contesting that, and at that point, I'll turn it over to the chief, and he can give you more details, Mr. Chairman.
Chief Norman?
Yes, good evening, good everybody. Obviously, from the onset of the pandemic, the highest priority for the fire and EMS fire was to take care of the patients as best we could with the unknowns of getting exposed ourselves, exposing hospital staff, wearing additional P P E. People that we were taking care of were much, much sicker. They were, you know, we didn't know what the COVID was going to bring. Hence, it was at that time when we started doing our responses in the operations department, we changed it up a little bit. Not every group always has two paramedics on it. When one group would stop a shift or end a shift, and the next group coming in only had one paramedic, we were supplementing that, that group with a second paramedic. Basically, that was so that we would reassure that every citizen would, as we get EMS Uh, basically that was so that we would show, reassure that every citizen would, would, as, as we get EMS calls, uh, that they would at least get one paramedic at the highest level of care that we can provide. Um, you know, and take them to the hospital. Uh, it was the best, uh, scenario that we had. Um, and we really did some really great medicine with, uh, taking care of our citizens. And we also added, uh, an, an, uh, officer in charge on shifts that didn't have an officer in charge. We had vacation time and sick time. Uh, so we had some costs and overtime that, uh, throughout this whole pandemic and through the, uh, EOC, you know, uh, I've been keeping everybody, uh, up to, uh, up to date on where we are with, with staffing and calls and things like that. But ultimately we put our request in, in September to get reimbursed for our overtime costs. It was about $122,000. Uh, we heard back about, uh, three weeks later from a representative from FEMA saying they did approve 30, just a little under $34,000. Uh, but they're contesting the rest of it because they want additional documentation, attendance sheets, uh, calls, logs, actually. We had to send a bunch of call logs out there. So, uh, what we've done is we've, uh, provided all that data back to them to contest it like the Town Manager has said. And, but what happens is that it, it has tied up that $34,000 until they can make a final determination. Uh, talking with, um, Mr. McCall and Ms. Harnoist, um, it was suggested that, uh, because my overtime balance was, was getting quite low, um, to take out, uh, $25,000 out of the reserve fund from the council, um, and move it over into my overtime. And when the 33,000 and/or I'm hoping, uh, majority of the monies is returned from FEMA, FEMA, excuse me, um, will, will reimburse, so we'll move them, $25,000 back into the council reserve fund. That did it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Counselor Steves?
Yeah, I'm just curious, uh, through you to Paul, um, have you seen, seen similar concerns from other communities about FEMA reimbursement?
Uh, at this point, we have not. Um, there are different ways of putting it in as a smaller project, which I think if we're gonna, we're gonna do it again. Smaller projects seem to go pretty quick. Um, and it gets, they get seen. This was a large amount. There was staffing and overtime for us on the fire department side. Uh, there was some other, uh, town departments that were involved. So each piece of this, of the FEMA reimbursement got broken down and got evaluated. So, um, I have not heard such a, such a problem with other towns, but again, you know, a lot of, a lot of the finance stuff usually, people don't talk too much about until, until we're really crying for money at the end of the day.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Comments? Anybody else? See none? Roll call.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you for you. So on that transaction, it doesn't say anywhere we'll reimburse back the account when we get the money. Maybe I don't see it. So we're gonna transfer $25,000. It doesn't say the money is gonna come back after the Chief Norman got it from FEMA.
Okay.
Do, do you have to say that on that? Like this, we'll make sure there was money coming back when we got it?
The National Weather Service in Greenland has activated the New Hampshire Emergency Alert System in order to conduct the required monthly test. It concludes this required monthly test under the New Hampshire Emergency Alert System.
To explain where she would put the money when it returns.
Good evening. Um, when the money comes back to the town, usually it'll go back into the, um, the general fund and then it'll close out eventually at the end of the fiscal year back to free cash.
So it doesn't go back to the account it come out from?
No, it actually doesn't.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Uh, uh, Karen, uh, how much will be left in free cash af, I mean, uh, Town Council Reserve after that transfer? Do you have that by any chance?
I do, yeah. Um, it'll be $96,091.75. No, I'm sorry. The 96 is before. So, um, the 25 will be about 70, 71,000.
Okay. Thank you. Then that's a pretty good balance for the remainder of the year pending no major emergencies because we've been pretty, knock on wood, fortunate in the last couple of years with, with that account. Correct?
I would think so too. I agree.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? See none? Roll call.
Counselor Jovan?
Yeah.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
And Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 13, vote to approve a transfer from free cash to the ambulance HHS Cares Act Relief Funds in the amount of $19,053.11 to transfer ambulance cares act relief funds from. Doesn't make sense, but I didn't even see that. Uh, from free cash to a separate council, monies can be spent towards fire department staffing operations. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Second.
So just so you can clarify, Karen, transfers from free cash to the ambulance HHS Cares Act Relief Funds, correct? Because it looks like a double, double wording here. And it's the, the HHS Cares Act Relief Funds is a separate account. Is that correct? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, that's correct. Taking it from free cash to a separate account, the Cares Act Relief HHS Ambulance Funds.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Counselor Lazo? Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, would you want me to just briefly explain what happened? You know, the, this agenda item?
Yeah, if Counselor Lazo's recommendation, it went through his subcommittee first.
Okay, sure.
The recommendations to be unanimous, favorable?
Thank you. Okay. Karen, if you want to explain it for me, please?
Sure. So, um, back last May, this $19,053.11 came in and it was booked into the ambulance revenue account. Um, at that time, there wasn't really a lot of guidance about how we were to proceed with it. When the end of the fiscal year came, I closed it out, um, to cash, so it became certified. And then, um, recently we've gotten some additional guidance where we actually have to spend out the funds and do some more specific reporting on it. So this is to take it out of the free cash, put it back into a separate account. And then the, um, the chief is going to determine the best use of the funds and then we'll report it. Because if anything's left over, then we would have to return the funds afterwards.
Okay. So the $19,053.11 is the amount that we received from that Cares Act money? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Katrona, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to, I believe the Town Manager, we had asked at subcommittee, um, for account numbers to be placed on this agenda item and I don't see them.
Yes, I can.
One question?
If I may, Chairman, and I'm gonna defer to Ms. Harnoist, I did ask and I was told there are no, um, account numbers associated with this transfer. Um, she could probably provide you the details as to why.
Karen?
Yes, if I could. Um, because the free cash is not an actual, well, the, the money is sitting in the fund balance, the actual account that's called free cash. It's what's certified that by the Department of Revenue. And this, um, the ambulance HHS CARES Act, usually what I do is I wait till it goes through Town Council and then if it's approved, then I assign an account. So that's why there's no account number provided on that. So it's, it's a little bit unlike some of the other transfers that are already, the accounts already exist within people's budgets.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Thank you, Karen, for the explanation. If I can continue. Karen, do you have the date or do you happen to know the date that free cash was certified from the state?
I do, yes. It was certified on, um, Monday, January 25th, 2021.
And the amount that's in the account?
In the general fund, the amount certified, um, is the same balance that's on the transfer. It was $1,007,918.56 in the general fund.
Okay. Okay, I, I, I was just, I was a little confused and I was reading through the minutes at our last meeting, but that meeting was also on the 25th at night and there was no money. It, it, from those minutes, it stated that there was no money in free cash at all. And maybe it was, should have said it was pending certification possibly. So I was confused.
Well, just as a point of clarification, my comment was that there was no, we have not received the certified amount of free cash. So therefore, at that time, at 7:00 PM on January 25th, the Town Council was not aware of any certified free cash number for us to be able to say that we could spend it.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm not trying to click on words. I'm just reading.
I wanted as a point of.
I'm just going, I'm just picking on the words. It just says, Counselor Chair Jovan reminded, uh, the council that there is no free cash amount to take from at this point because it's already been allocated. So when I read that, I said, okay, we have no money. And now where did 1.8 million come from? That was my, and Karen just provided me with the explanation. It's, it, it was confusing, especially probably to the taxpayers, hearing that we had nothing. Now all of a sudden we have money, so.
Well, I think maybe that, I think then maybe we'll go back and take a point of clarification of the record because the record was very clear that I said that we had, the certified free cash that we had from the previous year had already been allocated to the fiscal year budget and we were waiting on the pending certification of the new free cash. Those are my exact comments at that meeting.
Okay, don't reflect that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Marquetti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Um, during the subcommittee meeting, uh, Chief Norman and uh, explained exactly what they used money for, so I wouldn't mind hearing that again. Through you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through, uh, through you to, uh, Counselor Marquetti and, and all the other counselors. So that $19,000 will be sort of put aside. Uh, we did discuss, uh, if we were needing some PPE. Um, also, we're, we are going to move forward with adding a second paramedic, um, on the vehicles as we move forward, just like we did last year. Currently, right now, if we don't have a second paramedic working, there's one paramedic doing all these, all the, uh, calls. Um, you know, not providing the best patient care because you can't be in two places at the same time. But, uh, definitely, uh, this will be for staffing, the second paramedic as we move forward through, through the rest of fiscal year.
Second?
Um, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
And Counselor Jovan?
Yes. Okay. Item 14, ordered, uh, for the Town Council approved prior to the date of this order that authorized the borrowing money to pay cost of capital projects is supplemented to provide that in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Section 20. The premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bond or notes, may be applied to pay project costs and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied.
Is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
Counselor Steves?
Sorry, I think we just lost you, Jack.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, we talked about, uh, so, yes, we did. We talked about this agenda. Uh, we approved it unanimously. Basically, a quick summary is that, uh, we have been doing this for several of our capital projects in the past. I'm accidentally skipped, accidentally forgot to do it for, um, the most recent bonding for this, for the roads. So, um, Melissa wanted to apply it to that and any, and any possible other ones that we might have missed in the past. Because it'll allow us to save some money on the, on the actual costs of the bonds themselves by being, being able to take back, uh, being able to apply any cash that we get back from them to the cost of the bond, of the, that we're actually paying back. So if I explain that properly, I hope. Um, because I'm not implying that's guy, but, uh, it sounded like a good idea to us, so.
All right. Melissa, do you have anything to add? Or Mr. Town Manager?
Uh, before Melissa jumps on, I will also say that, uh, there was some questions about the wording that were raised at subcommittee and the current version there should reflect the questions, uh, that were raised that evening about the specificity of this council and the prior orders. Without, I'll, I'll refer to Melissa for the, the rest of the explanation. Melissa?
Yeah, um, so Counselor State got this, um, got this right, so the, and the intent of this is, um, based on legislation as part of the, um, Mass Municipal Modernization Act. Um, and again, I had neglected to add this to, um, the most recent, um, borrowing authorization. So this will, uh, cover that and any, um, bond issue that might have inadvertently been missed in the past, of which I don't know of any, but you know, why not cover it all? It was my thought process. Um, and, uh, so the intent of it is that it, should we receive a premium, um, on the bond issuing, that we would, um, reduce the amount of principal borrowed, therefore saving the town money, um, over the cost of paying back interest on a loan, we'd be paying less principal, we'd have less principal, therefore pay less interest.
Any questions from Melissa, Town or the Town Manager? Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, thank you. Uh, Melissa, I was just curious. I don't think I asked this at the, at the meeting, but, um, do you have a rough idea of how much we typically get back from these kinds of bond sales in cash?
It, it really depends on the, um, it really depends on the amount that we're borrowing for and, and what they, what they're usually trying to do is, um, when you, when we give you an estimate of, of debt, um, we say, oh, it's gonna cost us around 3%, but we never really get, um, a bond of 3%. We get a range of, of 2%, 3.5%, 4% going out over the course of the 20 years, you know, bottom blocks. Um, in order for, um, the town to agree to those heavier weighted blocks that are, have a higher interest, they pay us the interest upfront, um, so that they can sell those for long-term investors. And so what we do is we get the cash and then when we tell you it costs us 3% for this loan, it's really the blended rate of, um, the lower rates, the higher rates, the length of the loan and the cash we receive. You know, what's the true cost of the, of the 20 years that we're paying the loan back at, uh, less the premium we receive, um, at all the different rates that we, um, that we received in the bond issuing. So if you ever really, um, are having trouble sleeping, there are those, um, bond issuing books that come out. It's have a lot of information about the town, which you, some of you might find actually pretty interesting. It's a lot of work put together. But it also explains all the different notes with each year that's due and the rate that's associated with it. So it's usually by a percentage of the total borrowing, the actual dollar amount, um, I couldn't say. But, you know, it's usually several thousands of dollars, you know, that we get, um, to reduce the loan back.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Comments? Concerns? See none? Roll call.
Council Marketti.
Yes.
Council Ryan.
Yes.
Council Steve.
Yes.
Council Adams.
Yes.
Council Katrona.
Yes.
Council Daniel.
Yes.
Council Dow.
Yes.
Council Jovan.
Yes.
And Council Lazo.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item fifteen, vote to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty-one should be council aging grant for the Massachusetts. There was a change in this, is that correct? I know I got an email earlier today. Mr. Town Manager, you're on mute.
Yes, it's um it should be changed to reflect council on aging grant. And I see Ms. Haddock is nodding.
Is it from the Ma- what what agency is it from?
It's from the Office of Elder Affairs.
Mr. Chair, I have the corrected agenda item.
Thank you. I didn't get a chance to go ahead. I'll defer it. Council Daniel, can you do that?
Vote to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty-one council on aging formula grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred eighty dollars for dates of service from July one, twenty twenty through June thirty, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion is second. All right, discussion tapped.
Um I don't know what you need to know. Um this is our grant that we get annually. It's based on twelve dollars per senior, and that's based on the twenty-ten census. Um they base it on thirty-two, thirty-two hundred sixty-five elders. Um that pays my salary, well, part of my salary, um Earl's salary, it pays for our exercise program and all of our um expenses for supplies and things like that throughout the year for the senior center.
Thanks. Okay. Any questions? Concerned? In that role call.
Council Ryan.
Yes.
Council Steve.
Yes.
Council Adams.
Yes.
Council Tron.
Yes.
Council Daniel.
Yes.
Council Dow.
Yes.
Council Jovan.
Yes.
Council Lazo.
Yes.
And Council Marketti.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item sixteen, vote to approve the council pursuit applying for the Massachusetts Electric Vehicle Incentive Program, Mass E V I P Grant for public charging stations to be located at the municipality parking lot behind the fire station, in front of the library on Main Street, Town Common on Crystal Street, and the parking lot on the town at the town hall. Is there a motion?
The mood.
Second.
Motion is second. Uh Council Adams, who's through your subcommittee?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This uh was voting unanimously the other day, the other night, three to zero. Um I'll refer to uh Town Manager, Mr. Rumsey.
Mr. Town Manager.
Um good evening, Mr. Chairman. I will refer to Mr. Rumsey. He did the majority of work on this in the presentation the other evening.
Thank you. Eric?
Certainly. Um so the uh town is looking to expand upon our electric vehicle charging and um we are working towards um kind of bringing the future into town and um you know uh hopefully with bringing in electric charging, you know, more stations will bring in more people, which brings in more businesses, et cetera. Um so the purpose of this grant, we're looking at uh several locations, obviously, within downtown. Um the two stations we have currently at the town hall, which are um stations where people can charge at no cost, we are um proposing to move both of those stations. Um one to behind the town hall for the charging of the town vehicle and another and the other one to D P W. Um you know, again, uh for the future, we're you know, potentially looking at a vehicle for the D P W uh that would be electric and could charge there. Um we'll be looking to replace those units with a uh pay-as-you-go or pay-as-you-charge um station at the town hall with two um two heads, so we're not losing any vehicle charging capability. Um you know, we're looking at the in front of the library. Um we've spoken to uh Margaret at the library and she is very much in favor as long as it's not going behind her building. Um there's a, you know, shortage of parking there to begin with and um having one space be reserved for electric vehicles, she did say would be a hardship, so we're looking at uh in front of the building on Main Street. Um and again, we're looking at the fire station uh at the Edwards Parking Lot. Um you know, kind of the same thing, potentially a dual head or dual charge station there. Um and potentially the same thing on Crystal Street at the town uh green.
Any questions?
Questions, yeah.
Council Adams.
Uh thank you, Mr. or Council, uh Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add also in here was um we had looked at several locations, but they weren't near power sources. I do know that uh Mr. Rumsey worked uh closely with the D P W Director as well. And that's why the locations were picked as as well. Uh we we did bring up Central Street Parking Lot, but there's a hiatus of the five years. We don't want to tear up uh the the new concrete or anything like that, but it's it is for the future. Um these locations, uh each location, uh we could get up to fifty thousand dollars per per location, so we're trying to keep it under the fifty thousand dollars. And we decided to work on the vendors because we saw success at the town hall area. At the same time, in those four areas that we want to put them in throughout town, uh the town taxpayers shouldn't directly pay for the maintenance of these charging stations, including uh uh annual maintenance or or anything like that or any type of damage, so uh that'll be included. Uh Town Manager was instrumental in in briefing us as well because where he came from, he gave us a uh great presentation from, I believe it was about eight, nine years ago, when Chelmsford did it as well and showed the the benefit. Uh he gave us a little cost analysis, showed us the benefits of of these charging stations. And um one thing he did mention in here as well was uh with President Biden in office, he is pushing towards electric vehicles uh and uh why not uh go for as many as we possibly can within the town near power stations or uh local power uh to uh to benefit not only our residents who have electric vehicles right now, but uh hopefully in the future uh near the downtown area and the uh common area, so. Um that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Council Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh just one question. The meter at the library is gonna be on Main Street? You saying, Eric? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Uh so we would have one space on Main Street dedicated for electric vehicle parking uh and charging.
Well, I'm not sure if it's a good idea to put on Main Street. Why? It's not gonna be. I know she's saying short of parking, but down the road, isn't it supposed to be in the future? I'm not sure how long when that blue house on the corner be sold to the town, we're gonna expand the parking in the back for the library. And I never see the library parking school, so I prefer to put that electric meter in the parking now on Main Street. Just a opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Council Katona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, through the Town Manager. I I was at this subcommittee meeting when there was there was quite a bit of discussion. It was all very good. Um and after that, I did come up with a couple of questions. What is the estimated cost per installation and how much are we actually applying for in this grant? Maybe I'm missing it, but I I don't see it.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would have to refer those uh questions to Mr. Rumsey because I I do not have that information.
Eric?
Certainly through you. The uh the grant is for the D C F C, which is the the D C fast charging stations. Um the amount of the grant is up to fifty thousand dollars per station. So, you know, we're looking at four stations, so in in theory, the grant amount is for up to two hundred thousand dollars. And that covers the installation and the the purchasing of equipment.
Okay, so we're applying for two hundred thousand? Is that correct?
Up to. Correct, up to two thou- two hundred thousand.
Okay. Want to make sure I didn't have any other questions. I thought I had another one. Are the conditions of are there conditions of the grant that that they're going to be pay-as-you-go? That they're going to be credit card, such as Charlton or surrounding towns?
Uh if I may, Mr. Chair. Sure. So that is an option that we are looking uh to utilize in this and there is no real cost difference between a uh pay-as-you-go option and uh a non, you know, a like a free uh charging station. So yes, we will be looking into the pay-as-you-go also. Um that is covered under the grant. Also, it's not, it's not, um you know, the town's not putting anything out additional for that.
My question, we we currently in town, we have four registered vehicles um in the town now, and we do see use at the town hall by at least one, maybe two of those vehicles. Um so in the future, is there an estimate and any estimations on revenue? That this could bring into town?
We looked at that briefly and nothing conclusive that I had seen. I know um Town Manager had some data from uh from his hometown that did have uh some potential revenue on there. Um
Okay.
Yes, I'll start for now. Thank you.
Council Lazo.
I'm all set. My question was how many electric cars do we have in Southbridge? Uh Council Katrona said four uh registered electric cars. Uh that was my question. I wanted to uh try to understand the supply and demand end of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um I actually support this idea. I don't think it's such a bad idea. Uh maybe there's only four cars now in Southbridge, but if we start putting charging stations in town, maybe that will encourage more people to buy electric cars. Um the climate change is real, and if we don't do something about it, we're all gonna pay the price in the end. So um I know that uh General Motors has announced that they're going to start making nothing but electric cars, so I think this is the future. Um and I think it's be a good idea to put these in in town to encourage people to uh use electricity, uh buy uh electric cars. Uh it may be expensive if if uh there's a fee attached to help defray the cost of maintenance. I don't have a problem with that. But it's not a deal breaker. I'd still look for it either way, but I I do think it's a good idea that we install these. I have to agree with uh Council Dow, though. I I'm not sure I'm crazy about Main Street. But other than that, I mean, again, if that's where it's going, it it's not gonna change my vote. I I do support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Steve.
I mean, I was just thinking that along the same lines, that I don't have a real problem with this either. But I was talking to somebody on over the weekend and it came up with an interesting issue that maybe we can take this and use it to that the fact if we have these stations in place, maybe we can have one that can be dedicated to or or maybe later down the road dedicated to town vehicles and we can use this as a jump off jumping off point to get more town electric vehicles. I was talking to them specifically about the idea of of police departments using electric vehicles. And I think there may be a place to start seriously thinking about doing that. Townwide police, police department, wherever, because there they make a lot more sense going forward in the long term. Thank you.
Council Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, uh I think all the questions were really, really good, and I I think there was a lot thought process in because it was two meetings. So if you attended the two meetings, you you would have, you would have heard that uh information. Um I will say that it's not what it's about right now. It's uh it's about the future of our town as we hopefully rebuild the Main Street area, uh old American Optic Bowl area, and also the municipality area in the back of the uh uh right behind the fire station. Um I believe it, I think it was about the fifty thousand dollars per location. And to answer Council Steve's was the the two that are at the town hall right now. We can utilize those for the current town vehicles, the electric vehicles as well. Hopefully I answered that question, or if that was even the question he was asking, but thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't really have such a question, as I was thinking we could use it as a jumping off point to expand the town's ve- town's electric vehicle fleet.
Thank you. Council Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, do we have a second electric vehicle? Does the town own a second electric vehicle? I know we're, I just said we're putting one behind town hall and one in the D P W.
Uh. Council Adams.
I did attend the subcommittee and I didn't think to ask the question until just now.
Uh I can answer that if you like.
Go ahead, Eric.
So the the town only has the one electric vehicle at this time. Um we have been uh, you know, discussing with Heather for the future for potential for an electric vehicle. Um there are a number of electric pickup trucks, for example, that are coming out in the next um year to five years, so there's potential that uh, you know, D P W may end up with an electric vehicle also.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Council Steve.
Um I was just gonna say what he just said. I was just gonna say the fact that that this had originally been approved by the council. Um actually, before most of the current councilors were on the council, so and it was some, there was some dispute over creating the electric charging station um and buying that particular car. Um but it is there, it's being used, and I I I don't mind the idea of having someplace where we can encourage expanded uses and get the people off fossil fuels, although I am concerned about going too far into electric supplies when we're really not sure where the source of the energy is coming from on a larger scale. But I don't think four charging stations will have that much of an impact as far as that goes.
Thank you. Council Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just have one thing. If we can amend the uh Main Street Station to the back of the to the library, we can, I think uh most our councils so far agree on the idea and the technology, it's coming. And everybody's gonna have a electric car. I think it's a great idea. It would be uh maybe not number one, but most uh town around us don't have that. So I think that's something uh to tell people where we're going to get, you know, with the technology and everything coming uh, you know, in the future. So the only thing I have, if we can just move that uh meter from the Main Street to back to the library, I think that's better because we Main Street, we don't have too many parking right now to hold one electric car and we like I I'm not, I know in the future there's gonna be a lot of electric car, but at that moment, we don't have too many. So I think we should leave Main Street free for now, and we added that station behind the library, and I think we should be fine. Thank you.
And Council Lazo.
I don't know who made the decision on where these stations go, but in some situations like the town hall, you're limited on parking for citizens to come into the town hall in various other areas of town. I think we should have a little more consideration for the majority of the people that use the parking areas. Uh if you're gonna put a fill station in a D P W, they have plenty of um acreage down there to put a filling station or a charging station anywhere at the facility. At the town hall, we're limited. Um if you go in the back of the town hall and you see how many vehicles we have and when citizens come to the town hall, there's always a a kind of a parking crunch. So I hope there's a So I hope there's a, you know, I I know this is a future thing. I'm not sold on it right now and saying, you know, with four cars, let's concentrate with, and put all the dollars into this where I would be. We have uh bigger problems in Southbridge than uh electric cars. Thank you.
And Councilor Ant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I I, I look at it like we're approving the grant. We're not really approving the spaces right now, and I think I'd want to have more time to have our department heads talk it out before we just unilaterally change the placement of it. I think this is more of a day-to-day type of task and not so much our P V U, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Um, I guess to that question, Councilor Adams, um, was this specific in the grant application that you had to uh have the location or is it some uh ability to change late, at a later date? We're just.
I don't think it's.
More locations.
I don't believe it's specific to uh the grant application itself. I, um, all I'm doing is taking it off the agenda item that was received to us, and then we added those specific locations um to it. And that was based off of, I believe, DPW, Eric, and whoever else was involved in putting all this stuff together. I I will say, uh, I do want to make mention to uh Councilor Lozo. I I understand, you know, we don't want to take, we don't want to take away from some of the parking space. We've had two of those charging stations there for years, and I don't think it's really taken away from our current, our current issue in front of the town hall. But uh, uh, may- maybe uh Eric can answer uh that a little bit better than I can. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Eric, uh, is the submission of the grant, uh, are those locations, is that contingent on the grant uh received? Or is that ability to change our locations upon uh award? Is, if, you know, can we apply for four stations with uh proposed sites that's subject to change?
Uh, yes, we, I believe that we can change the locations as long as um it's at government-owned property. Um, we qualify for the hundred percent front funding. So if we change the location from the front of the library to the rear of the library, I don't believe that it matters at all based upon the um, the matrix with the grant. Um, so the way that the grant works is after you receive the grant, like we did in uh two thousand seventeen, the charging station has to remain on the site um and available for a minimum of thirty-six months. After that point in time, uh, essentially you own the unit and can um sell it, if you like. You can move it, you can transfer it. Um, so I double-checked with um DEP that the, through the E V, the EVIP program um about moving the two stations that we currently have. And because we've had them longer than thirty-six months, we are free and clear to move them to anywhere we like, including us utilizing them only for town vehicles, not for the public.
Councilor Ketrone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, since this is just a grant application, if this is approved, um, that it come back discussion to council at this time. Or at that time. Thank you.
Councilor Adams?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually don't have a problem with that. I know we spent a couple of meetings talking about this, uh, the locations and working with uh the couple entities, but uh I actually don't have a problem as long as we can apply for these uh grants out there and up to fifty thousand dollars. Um, you know, whatever works down the road, uh, maybe gives us a little bit more time, including, uh, I know Mr. The Town Manager, uh, talked about looking at vendors and and uh which ones are going to be correct for the town. Um, so I give us a little bit more time.
Thank you. Councilor Ketrone?
Can I offer that as an amendment, Mr. Chairman? That we, since this is just a grant application, if approved, that it come back for discussion to this council?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, uh, of who?
Point of, point of ovation.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Um, I I believe we would have to come back anyway for us to accept the gor- grant award, correct? Anyway, so there's no need to have it be amended because it's going to come back for us to accept anyway, and at that time, we can discuss it.
Councilor Steve's shaking her head, yes. So, Councilor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh, just to let the, all the council know, this is the, first it came to the, our uh board and was present as a free station, uh, to to provide a free uh uh free station for the public, uh, next to the common. And uh me and uh Councilor Adam and a few other, we changed it to be charging, uh, not the town be uh responsible for the electric bill. And that's why we say as well, we're applying for uh station, let's apply one time for another three, and we look for those locations, the parking, you know, we be able, you know, in the future, people park and use them, uh, or spend time at the library or walk in the downtown or walk, uh, hopefully in the future, uh, next to the AO when they do the park. So that's why, you know, we try to uh look for these uh locations to put the electric station, and we try not to let the town be responsible for those electric bill. Uh, that's why we decided to go uh charge, you know, to the public to use them. At the same time, we found the, the parking be able access to this in other town or somewhere, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's handy to use. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, Councilor Lozo, okay?
Um, this discussion, I'm, I'm sorry I didn't make the subcommittee meeting. Are you saying that this is not going to cost the town any money as far as providing energy on the charges? As far as charging, the station's going to charge a car. Who's paying for the electricity to charge the car?
Mr. Mr. Chair, I can try to answer that real quick.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, uh, Councilor Lozo, that's a good question. Uh, that was something that we talked about, utilizing a vendor who would help pay for the maintenance of it and electricity used. So I know, uh, the town manager brought up a couple scenarios where the first hour or two were free. Uh, but then u- utilizing uh a fee status. I believe the software that comes with these charging stations, that you could work with the, the organization that, uh, or the company that, that does this and have that automatically added into the fee. So you could swipe it uh through a credit card, debit card, uh, application on your, on your smartphone, stuff like that. But I don't think, uh, Councilor Dow brought this up. We didn't agree with the taxpayer paying for us, us paying for them to charge their vehicle. It's like us, you know, asking the taxpayer to pay for our gas or the bills.
Well, that, that's my point. I'm, I'm, I'm in the middle on a decision. I'm not, yeah, yes or no. I'm just thinking about if we are going to take the grant, like we always take the grant, and then later on, we hold the bag, the taxpayers, as far as maintaining the charging stations and providing the electricity for the people that will be, uh, charging your vehicle, so to speak, um, I've got a problem with it. Now, if we're going to be like Joe Dow and have like a charging station like you have a gas station, and you pay so much a kilowatt to charge a car, and we're providing, we're making income, then I'm with Joe Dow. I think we should put these in and uh, and charge accordingly. And if they swipe their card, the taxpayer makes the money, I'm all good with this deal.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to address Councilor Lozo's point and some of the questions that were raised by others. Um, and I know, um, Councilor Marquette asked me if I could get him some additional information, which I, I did write to some vendors. I'm trying to get some information. Hopefully, we can make a presentation at a later date. But what, what had happened in my experience, in one of the grants, uh, some of the costly electricity was covered. As you heard Mr. Rumsey say, that it, some of these have a timeline associated with them. You're obligated to do certain things when you take the grant for so long. Um, and then afterwards, it, the town gets to make the decisions. And one of the grants that I worked with, uh, some of the energy costs were covered, but at the end of that three-year period, it became a question of who was paying for it. So that's when we made a decision to look at covering the costs. Some wanted to provide it as an incentive, and that's something you can discuss at that point in time. But the other thought was, as you just said, make sure that we charge a sufficient amount to at least cover the, the energy that it takes to charge that and to um factor in the cost of any of the software that we use in order to track the usage and do statistics. Town, it doesn't preclude the town at some point in time from going one step further to charge a little bit more if they want to garner more money to do maintenance or as, as I wound up doing with the software, I was able to configure all of these controls. And you could put in parking fees if you so chose as a way to generate revenue and or as a deterrent to prevent people from monopolizing those stations. So there's a lot of opportunities that could be available to the town after the expiration of the grant and depending upon what type of software we choose. But I think, um, as that point in time comes after we apply, I'm sure, uh, Mr. Rumsey and I can gather some information to give you a more um detailed presentation or list of options.
Any further questions? Any further questions? Councilor Steve?
I mean, just for clar- just for clarification, um, as I understand if you, from what you're saying, if I heard you properly, that there, you are seeking a grant that would pay fifty thousand dollars for each station. So there's, and I'm assuming that there's, that we are, that you are not necessarily assuming we're going to get all four stations. Am I correct on that? Uh, you're hoping we'll get, but we won't necessarily.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Um, and the other thing, I just wanted to make a point, get Dub's Tales back with what something Eric said a few minutes ago, um, that I wasn't aware of, that the stations after thirty-six months, we can do whatever we want with them and we can take them out of the public domain. Um, I don't think we should be taking them out of the public domain. I think they should always be available to the public. Just, that's my opinion on that. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Councilor Lozo?
Uh, I agree with, um, Councilor Steve's, but much like the marijuana question, I'm, I'm, I'm revenue-driven on this. Uh, when you're in business, you're business to make money, and I know in government, sometimes it doesn't work that way. But I was, as long as I'm in government, I would rather promote, you know, if we're going to have a charging station and, um, people want electric cars, and uh I think that we could actually charge, uh, something to charge the vehicles and without damaging any of our parking areas. I mean, I'm not a fan of the one at the town hall, I never was. Uh, when we had town council meetings, we don't have enough parking and we end up, uh, you know, I think the charging station should be convenient for charging, but also convenient to the taxpayer that they can do still with their parking lots. I think the one on Main Street, uh, Joe Dow's a hundred percent right on this. I mean, don't take a parking space on Main Street in front of the library, in front of the post office where people utilize the street parking. Um, putting it in back of the building and then having signage showing it's there, I would, I would be more in favor of something like that. But, I mean, I'm, I'm very curious about it. I'm not, uh, not sold on it, but I mean, everything's for the future. Uh, I just don't want to do something where we get the grant, we install it, and then the taxpayers in the end are holding the bag, and I, uh, I'm just being cautious. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, oh, Eric, I just, uh, when you submit the grant application, is it going to ask you what locations are proposed locations? How does that work so that we're not locked in if we want to have further discussion later on? Because you stated earlier that it has to be tied to a municipal owned property. So when you submit that. So i- is there the ability to change it on that application?
Uh, if you can give me, um, let's see.
And what does the application due by?
The application is due March nineteenth. All right, uh, if, if you can give me just, um, you know, ten seconds just to browse the application so I can get you a hundred percent correct information on that?
I just, I, I mean, I, I know the grant applications that I've done, that, you know, when you put in that language saying you assure that this is going to be put at a location subject to these requirements, they pretty much hold you to it. They don't give you a lot of leeway to change, or they'll take the money back. So, uh, I, that, that's my only concern. I, I, I get the Main Street, I, I had a citizen call me tonight, um, may have called others, you know, telling me there was only four. Uh, I get there's only four, but I do understand that the move, even with our own governor, is to move to electric and the climate and all that. Uh, I want to be prepared for the future, but um, I just want to make sure that whatever we do is correct um, so that we're not left with, um, I mean, if you need to come back to us with further, we could postpone this in the next, next meeting because that's February, that you'd have plenty of time from March nineteenth to any assurances or anything like that. Our next meeting is February twenty-second, so.
I actually have the app, the uh location requirements, um, right now and right in front of me if you'd like me to, to read from the, from the grant application.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. So the applicant must have evidence of ownership of the, of the location identified in, in the application or evidence that installation allowed on the property. Uh, okay, so that's not a problem, the town owns the, all those. Location must not be a residence. Um, all applicants must allow practical access to and use of the parking space and EV charging station for twenty-four hours per day, seven days a week, at the location identified in the application and describe such access in the application. So yes, it looks like we do have to, um, let them know the app, the actual location. Um, let me see, anything else in here that jumps out at me? Um, for each station, we have to have a spa- a parking space that is identified that it's reserved parking only for electric vehicle charging. Um, and it says the grant act, the grant recipient, I'm sorry, must actively enforce this requirement. Um, we've had that several occasions at the town hall where, uh, you know, we've, uh, one of the electric vehicle parking stations has been taken uh by a gas-powered vehicle. And, um, you know, if somebody comes up with an active vehicle, people are really good about moving without us having to get police involved or anything like that. Um, let's see, we have a year to install the stations. So yeah, it looks like, yes, we do have to give them the location.
And Councilor Lozo?
Yeah, uh, just food for thought. Just at the town hall, for example, we were in parking spaces underneath the parking garage because we do not have enough parking, um, at the town hall. That was part of the, uh, idea of having citizens go to the town hall. But what happens is we have to provide handicap access. We know that's a priority. Um, by the time we have the handicap, um, parking, and then all the municipal vehicles that we have with, uh, at town hall, in the back of the town hall, when you look at that, common sense tells me, and I know citizens have complained to me about, you know, I want to go to the town hall, whether it be back when we had meetings at the town hall or just to do business, um, with the inspections department and the clerk and everybody else, um, we, we restrict the common use for the common person. Um, and I know there are some priorities, but this one here, I think we need to use our head here where we put these stations. I mean, yeah, it's, uh, when you pull into the town hall, you've just got a group of parking spaces up against the side of the town hall, and one of them, you know, is handicap at the end. So I think we have to take into consideration, uh, the common citizen that uses the town hall and the facilities once covert's over. I mean, right now, we, we're going to do what we have to do, and then later on, we're going to, we're going to find out that maybe putting it on Main Street was a problem, or maybe having it right on the side of the town hall is a problem. Uh, I think, you know, I wouldn't put a gas station there, why would you put a charging station? I wouldn't put a gas station there. Why would you put a charging station? Thank you.
Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh, just uh Counsel Lazo, uh right now, we already have a station there, so and actually we have two. So by moving those two and put one only, so actually we're given one more parking extra to the public plus the town vehicles parked there all the co- all the time, it's gonna be parked in the back. So that it's plus for the uh public to be able to park there. And I understand where you come from, but it's already two there. So actually by moving those two stations, only put one from the grant, we open one spot and the other one is gonna be empty for the public, not, you know, for the town vehicle to stay there all the time. So uh, I'm not sure, you know, like, because there's already two there's. So you you're trying to say we should move them completely, not put one there? That's what you mean by? Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lazo?
I would be in favor of removing all of them from the town hall. Uh, I also would be in favor of going to the uh the parking lot behind the town uh fire station. It's a municipal parking lot. There are many parking spaces there. You could put a charging station there with the proper signage. And you would never even feel uh if there were two charging stations on that parking lot. Because of the mass of parking that we do have. So for me, you know, the town hall's tight parking. We took two away from the common people, but now we're gonna make it look like, well, we'll give them one back. When I don't think either one of them belong there, but that's just my personal opinion. Where I would put charging stations where we have uh bigger parking lots where, you know, you just pull into the charging station, you wouldn't, and then maybe even pass pass a regulation that do not park there unless you're an electric car. But again, you know, when you're talking about four cars to tie up two spot parking spaces right now is just wrong at the town hall. And just my personal opinion, uh I think we should service the majority. Uh, when all the business vans and trucks come in to pull permits or whatever at town hall and then there's an electric car, two of them have to be charged there. I've got a problem with it. Thank you.
Counsel Katron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the town manager possibly. I think a lot of this discussion, I know the subcommittee had two meetings and and probably should have happened, um would have been more appropriate at subcommittee. Um These are nice to haves at what expense? Um, and w- we haven't talked yet about unattended consequences, meaning damage vandalism. Um, if we had to install cameras per would that be covered under the grant? Um, as part of the fifty thousand dollars or would that be an additional expense that the town would have to pay? Or for example, if someone, um and we know it happens, if someone ran over this and did, we didn't see it because we didn't have a camera. Um, just, you know, the 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 I I'm really questioning some of the the, I don't know, the ideology versus practicality, but um can can someone tell me if this fifty thousand dollars, Mr. Town Manager, maybe, would cover the cost of a camera if we needed to install?
I don't know the specifics of what we can and can't imply for. I mean, that Mr. Rumsey could tell us that, I'm sure. Um, at some point, I envision that we will want to have cameras on the outside of a lot of our public bu- buildings if we don't already. I haven't gotten to that level of detail with uh Southbridge Cable. I know in the last community, I worked very close with our IT as well as our cable folks. And we wound up putting cameras in a lot of our public buildings in the surrounding um parking lots. Uh, it's not uncommon. It's tends to be the way of the future. Uh you, we always carry insurance in case cer- certain accidents happen. And I I think the whole idea behind this, and I think we recognize it, is that things are changing um socially, you know. GM is gonna do away with making um gas fueled cars, as I mentioned at the subcommittee. Um, the incoming administration is putting uh huge emphasis on electric vehicles and green technologies. This is something that I think we will have to adapt to. And at some point, we wanna uh draw citizens to come in as well as outsiders to use our downtown, our amenities. And it it becomes a quality of life issue and it may not be that common right now, but I I see it moving um from some of the urban areas to the more suburban areas as as I indicated before, Mike. Previous community, we wound up doing these. They were wildly successful. Uh, we generated income from them. Uh, as we tweaked the fees, we did see some of the users uh uh the number of users declined, but it it did pick up over time. Um, but again, I think uh we have to be mindful of what's going on uh in our environment, what's going on technology wise and what's going on in the future of our society and this is just part of being good stewards of our community or environment. So I I I do think it's a worthwhile endeavor, but I am I am cognizant of all the questions and to that point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rumsey whether or not any of those can concerns can be addressed through the grants such as the security. But I do think that our insurance would cover it and if we don't do it there, there are other technology grants that come available, uh technology cabinet grants. We could look into getting some additional security cameras for our parking lots and our public facilities as well.
Eric, do you have anything to follow up on that?
I I do, actually, yes. Um, so what is covered in the grant is the console um which gets wired to the electric supply, the cable can and connector to plug from the uh from the console, from the unit to the electric vehicle. Um, a cable management strategy, so like a retractable cable, a lot of these have now. Um, any mounts that are associated or pedestals. Um, a separate payment module, upgrading the electric supply, construction costs related to installations, including ADA EV parking space, signage and pavement painting and shipping. Um, so things that are not covered are things like bollards, curb stops, um electricity consumption for on demand. So that would be if you, it's a free charger, uh that the grant doesn't cover the electricity. Um, it does not cover land or parking space purchase or lease, software subscriptions, warranty taxes, um internet connection or cell signal and uh planning and permitting.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, and thank you, Eric, for for answering my question. Obviously, I I don't know, there there still seems to be a lot of questions. I know that, I know um Counsel Adams has been to a subcommittee twice. But with a lot of questions, um um would a motion be appropriate to refer back to subcommittee? There seems to be ample time to meet the application deadline?
If that's your pleasure.
I I'm throwing it out there. It seems to be a lot of, a lot of questions, so I I'm, if I need to put that and make a motion?
I'll second that.
Motion is second to refer back to subcommittee for further discussion. For chair, what's this? Hold on one second. Hold on. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to allow me to speak before the motion moved. We have already two meeting. And I don't see too many councils show up or or help us to put what we put together. And now we seem like we have more discussed before now. You know, at the town council meeting, we have more discussed on this. So my concern is move it back to the to the subcommittee and then we put something different and we come back to the town council and then we have the same issue. I prefer we just keep giving you discuss that here or put it on another meeting. This is my, I don't know, Counsel Adam would agree with me because we already have a few meeting, none of the council or some of them, I I I'm I'm not sure. Uh, it was any question was asking at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you. Um, well, I I go, I'm in particular, a lot was brought up about this, the locations and it going through the grant with um Mr. Rumsey, it sounds like that we need to have those exact locations agreed on. And we have time to make sure we do this right. We have a lengthy agenda still to go through. I think it would be appropriate.
But continue, Counsel Ryan. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so i- it's just my opinion that we've raised some questions. It came out tonight at the council meeting that we have to have the locations exact. There was debate about where those locations should be. I think it would be very appropriate to go back since we have time and do our due diligence and review those locations in particular. Thank you.
Counsel Lazo?
Um, this is a motion to refer to subcommittee. And I want to apologize to the chairman of the subcommittee. I'm a member and I did not attend uh because I was taking my upgrades online for my construction supervisor's license. And uh, I, that really wasn't a choice for me and I missed the meeting. Uh, I think the concept, as the manager has mentioned, the concept of electric cars is something of the future. The locations probably bother me more than the concept. Um, I further would rather have to go to subcommittee to discuss even the deal with the ones at the town hall. If we could come up with a better idea of 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 locations, um I would, that's where my problem is. It's not with the concept of electric cars and the environment and you know, God knows they beat that to death on the federal level. But my thing is, I'm worried all politics is local and when citizens that I represent discuss, why is this there? I think I feel like I'm obligated to put up the good fight to try and get these things that are convenient for electric cars and more convenient for people coming to these locations. So for myself, whether we discuss it tonight, tomorrow, or at a subcommittee meeting, I thought it would be probably better. I know that the subcommittee didn't, that didn't need anymore on the agenda. But the locations, I I really have a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Dana?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I'm prepared to vote on this tonight if need be. Um, I'm prepared to vote on this if it's amended in terms of where the locations are. Um, as a matter of compromise, I was, there a couple of questions come to mind. Number one, do we have to have four? Could we have just three instead? Um, and the other thing is, is if we're worried about the parking lot at the town hall, um, first off, we do have to keep what's there there because of the town hall vehicles that are used by the town hall staff. So I would think that we need to keep at least the charges that are there now, there now. Um, you know, we could always put two charging units in the uh Edwards, the Edwards Municipal Parking Lot behind the fire station. And if uh if need be, put one behind the library and put the one down at the town uh at the town common. Um, it seems to me that this way here, we uh we have, we have two of them at least that we located behind the fire station for citizens to use. And we have two of them behind the library and down at the town common, which are uh located in areas where we hope first we'll come, we'll visit the town and be able to use them and access them. Um, assess them, access them uh while they visit. So um I'm prepared for tonight and I'm prepared to make an amendment if need be, depending upon the pleasure of the council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The motion before us is a motion to refer back to subcommittee. So I'm gonna take comments on the motion to refer back to subcommittee first. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Dow and then Counsel Lazo.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just just to uh reiterate on this amendment itself, I actually, as the chair of the subcommittee, have no problem. We have time to to send it back. Um, that being said, we had a lot of talking up here this evening and a lot of great ideas. I would like to see those great ideas at the subcommittee because things from the cameras to the insurance and all that was actually brought up at the subcommittee. Locations were brought up a couple of times at the subcommittee. And we thought those were the best areas. No, we don't have to have uh, we don't have to have any, you know, whatever it may be. But as far as amending this to go back to the s- subcommittee or make a uh send it back to the subcommittee, I don't have a problem with it if we have a subcommittee meeting very soon and plenty of time to to get this through. Uh, but again, I would just like these great ideas that we're receiving this e- this evening and these great questions that we're seeing receiving this evening, I I hope they're here at the next plan and development subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Dow and then Counsel Lazo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The, I think that those stations have to be installed in the in the town property. We can't put them in a private. So this is the all the the location we get except Center Street because we just finished the renovation. We don't wanna do any construction there. Uh, regarding the town hall, I I I'm not against Counsel Lazo, but there's already two stations there. That's the whole idea. Why we we take two? Because I see people go already there and use those stations, not going to the town hall and doing it for free. So why not put a station with money there and move those other stations with the town owner already, one behind the building to keep that spot open for cars not on electric and the one on electric was just changing for the one with money. That's the whole idea. I- i- it's not a, you know, just a little uh clear. I'm not against you, Mr. Lazo, Counsel Lazo, but it's already two stations there. We're trying to take them out because it's being used for free. And then and the and the station, I mean, one of the town vehicles parked over there all the time. So none of the public or anybody can use it. This is the whole idea. Thank you.
Counsel Lazo?
Counsel, I think the reason why I'm in favor of referring to subcommittee and with all due respect uh to some of my fellow counselors, um, yeah, we could sit here and amend it and and do a quick fix on this. This is where government usually trips and falls on its head, is when you try to do a quick fix instead of going back to a subcommittee, if we didn't have time between now and the grant app, when it's due, I would probably be in favor of like to take care of it tonight and get it over with. I really think this is one that needs a little more planning and development on placement of locations. Not so much the electric car theory. You know, uh, I think we need to think about it. Um, you know, even talking about the town hall. Why put it on the side of the town hall? If we're gonna charge a town car, I would have put that in the back of the town hall where all the cars are stored. Um, but I don't know why it happened that way. But I think that if we go back to subcommittee, we could probably reconfigure what we do at the town hall, which would be better served to the public. And the Edwards Parking Lot is, you could put a charging station there like a filling station. I mean, you have that much room um where people could automatically go there, still be centrally located in walking distance of business in town hall. So I really, I I, you know, hope the council will send it back to refer back to town uh subcommittee, town council subcommittee for further work and I uh, I really will make it a point uh to make that subcommittee because this one's a little important. Because whatever decision happens, it's permanent. It's installed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion on the motion to refer back to the plan and development subcommittee for further? Say now, roll call to refer back to plan and development for further discussion.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
No.
Counsel Dow?
Upstanding.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
No.
And Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
For back Counsel Adams. Um, thank you for agreeing to have a
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Chair and all the counselors. See you on the sixteenth, sixty P M.
I'll be there.
I'll be there. Thank you.
All right. I'm seventeen. Vote to ratify the Community Development Block Grant, T D V G Grant. Uh, block grant, fiscal year twenty twenty agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development, D H C D in the town of Southbridge. Your motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Um, Counsel Adams, your recommendation from yourself.
Oh, boy. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was three zero unanimous on uh the second of February's plan and development subcommittee meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything? I know you or do you want to defer to Ms. Dean?
I will refer to Ms. Dean, but I just wanna let you, Mr. Chairman, and the counselors know that my internet keeps freezing up here. Um, so I may have to try to re-log in at some point. But at that, on that note, I will refer to Ms. Dean for further explanation.